ADM 13-4330 submitted by Crafton Toll for property located at southwest corner of 15th Street and Razorback Road.
Really?
Property is on urban thoroughfare and contains approximately 4.42 acres. The request is for a variance of the streamside protection zones, parking lot landscaping, and parking in the build-two zone.
We'll save the easiest for the last.
Yeah, I guess we'll start with Andrew.
This item has been on the planning commission agenda several times and there've been quite a few meetings back and forth with the applicant and staff. And I don't think I'll give a full presentation tonight and I think all commissioners know what variances have been requested. I will just go straight into the conditions of approval. With this particular version that applicant is proposing, staff is in support of all of the variances being requested. I did want to make one correction that's kind of in your packet that the applicant pointed out to me. There's a letter that's in your packet dated March and I believe that that references, there's also a memo in there that references them using porous concrete and some different other types of stormwater management techniques. And they're not proposing to do that. That has been outdated. So what you see in the conditions of approval here is still valid, but that original letter and that memo from several months ago is no longer valid. But going into this particular site, we do feel like the variances are warranted. Condition of approval number one is the determination of the variance to be in the streamside protection zone. And we do have the city floodplain administrator, Sarah Reed, here. She can explain her recommendations on all the different conditions here about bio-retention and the stream and repairing enhancement plan and all the other different recommendations on that condition. Condition of approval number two is 15 feet of green space between the street and the parking lot along Razorback Road. There's still less than 15 feet of green space and the urban forester isn't supportive of that. The applicant did provide some documentation that the state highway department allowed trees to be planted in the right of way, I believe, so that has addressed her concerns. Or no, that was on Razorback Road, sorry, not 15. Condition of approval number three is to allow for some of the street trees along Razorback Road to be planted in a planting green space strip instead of in the actual sidewalk. They're actually going to be developing what we would call kind of an urban form with the wide sidewalk and the building close to the street and it's a particular landscape requirement. You have to put the trees in urban tree wells, which we don't feel like would be appropriate in the trail in this setting. Condition of approval number four, the applicant is proposing to plant parking lot trees in a tree lawn. The minimum width of a tree lawn to allow a tree to survive, I guess, under our code is eight foot wide and they're proposing to be about six foot wide. So that's a variance of that landscape code. And the urban forester again is in support of this variance request with the condition that they plant more trees than is required by ordinance and they've actually counted 45 parking lot trees. And so that's in their condition of approval and it's also shown on the applicant's landscape plan. Condition of approval number five is putting parking lots in the build-two zone and the applicant's proposing a 32-inch masonry screen wall to screen the parking that is going to be closer to the street than is allowed. Condition of approval number six is the parking lot drive aisles are proposed to be narrower than would be allowed. The code says they have to be at least 24 foot wide to turn into a 90-degree stall. They're proposing some of these spaces to be between 22-foot wide drive aisle and up to 27 feet when they're next to the building to allow for a ladder truck, fire truck. But anyway, that's condition of approval number six. Condition of approval number seven, curb cut separation variance along 15th Street. This is not really related to the stream side, but it's a development variance that they're looking for at this point. And we do support it, finding that in order to get the access point on 15th Street in the right location, there would be some sort of variance required. Condition of approval number eight is the planning commission's determination to allow for parallel parking spaces on 15th Street. And that is classified as a principal arterial, which carries higher volumes of traffic. So it's not a typical condition to have parallel parking along an arterial like this, but we do recommend it in this case. There's a stop sign right in this area. It's fairly slow traffic speed. So that summarizes the variances and please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. I guess applicant's present.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Ely. I'm with Crafton Toll representing our project tonight. I think Andrew covered most of the high points in there. I just really want to thank Andrew and all the staff. I know we had several meetings on this and I think we've gotten to a point where we're happy with where we stand and we think it's a good project and are ready to move forward with it. Since the last time you saw it, I think the biggest changes are that we've pulled all the pavement out of that streamside zone one and we've alleviated some of those concerns as far as tree heat island effect and things like that by providing that lawn strip and things like that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about any of these variances that you might have.
So you guys are good with all the conditions as they're listed?
We are.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And I forgot, Sarah, I'm sorry. If you don't mind weighing in on some of your comments, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, we were, I think based on the meeting when we discussed this, we were working towards no parking or paving within zone one and the applicant did get it all removed from zone one. There will be small amounts of grading and a portion of retaining wall that are still in zone one. The mitigation is similar to what it's been all along. It's bio-retention basins, it's planting the other open areas that don't have trees in them now that'll still be open and it's doing the, what's described in that letter at the end of the packet, within the creek area with invasive removal and enhancing that stream corridor. If you have any questions?
Okay, cool, thank you. All right, I'll get back to you. Does anybody in the public like to speak to this? Oh, he's got a computer.
It's the cell tower guy.
Yeah, you don't have a cell tower on this one, do they?
Would you like to?
Yes, we have to have a cell tower. Aubrey Shepherd, we need a cell tower for this.
So you're as in favor as this is your cell towers?
Well, you know, you know, I've griped every time I knew you were making any variances on streamside ordinance. And I still don't believe, once it was passed, first it should have had a 100-foot barrier from a streamside. And I kept looking like, sure, well, some cities it would be. But anyway, so given that you're going to vary these things quite often, my philosophy is to suggest things that will help to make them better. And we've got staff members trying to do that. But there should be minimal soil disturbance in a place like this. Well, if you know this lot as I do, I've been making pictures of the wildflowers out there on that lot because it's a wet prairie site. And over the years, I've been doing it since before Bomb Stadium was built. And so it's still got, in spite of all the baseball games and football games and some of the basketball games, when we have people parking on this property, I mean solid parking. If you drive by there, some of you may come down there to park and catch the bus up to the game sites. But incredible as it may seem, there are native plants out there right now in bloom after having their roots crushed year after year. And this is part of the reason that we need to stick with, we need to landscape with natural plants that are already on the site and add some more as appropriate. And I think they've promised to utilize experts to do some of that work to improve the stream. But the ones that are there right now are so important to protect because they proved they will live there. So similar to, well, some of you may remember Chesney Prairie over near Solomon Springs. They dug up a highway right of way by trimming out the, at a certain depth, the roots and so forth to get all the native plants, rolled them up, took them over on Chesney Prairie from the extension of the highway and rolled it out on this old pasture land that hadn't had any native plants growing in years. And guess what? They came up that spring. Guess what else, if you haven't heard this? That stretch along the highway that they took them from, they came back from the roots there too. And so they just had to finally pave over that part. But the point is, the native, particularly perennial plants are very powerful and they will grow through concrete. And this year, because there was not a regional baseball tournament in town, they did not mow it off, they didn't park on it at the last minute. So native plants primarily come forth on the prairies in the summer months. April, they start coming up, May, and then June, depending on the rain, some of them grow two feet in two weeks and get up there and they flower, go to seed as rapidly as possible. And if things go right, they stay that way for probably generations, same plants, same roots in some places. And certainly we know that with trees. But there are several things that are required by ordinance that, well, you can't see the wildflowers there. But I made a set this week with, or in the last week, of things that you can see from this site. And it's, let me click on this very rapidly here, if you'll pardon me, and show you.
So Mr. Shepherd, are you suggesting they do something?
Yes, sir. I'm suggesting that they try to utilize and get their contractor, who'll be doing this work on that aspect of it, to utilize some of these plants. And I'll actually show you a picture that another person made of me out there showing him some of those native plants, if I can remember how to operate this thing from the side. Anyway, in that one picture, this is Baptisia alba and this is Baptisia alba. There's more of it there than on some of the protected prairie parcels in our state. Milkweed, the plant that the monarch butterfly has to have for its caterpillars. And by the way, almost nobody in Arkansas right now has seen monarchs this year. They're just about wiped out. But if we have milkweed for them, you will see them again in the future. So those are seed pods. These plants weren't up a month ago hardly. They were just showing up and they've already flowered for a few days and gone to seed. And as soon as those pods turn brown and start to split, then you can harvest them, take the seed, plant them somewhere else. But the key thing, because those are based on those deep roots, would be that the, if this is approved, that the builders would help the, probably with their construction machinery, to actually dig up some of this. Because you couldn't go dig it. You feel that soil right now. It is the black rich prairie soil that you find in a wet prairie. But it's so compacted, all these vehicles parking on it for all these years. But these things are coming up, in the case of that milkweed, if you go look down that center line, see the white road there? Milkweed's growing right out of there and it's partially gravelled, it's, you know, it's, just you'd say it's impossible to grow, you couldn't garden there with most things. But native perennials will struggle to survive and reproduce and our native insects such as monarchs, in the case of milkweed. And there are certain things, also in this set of pictures, it's at the top of my Flickr site right now, I've got quite a few bumblebees. And bumblebees are one of the few species that can utilize Baptisia alba for nectar because they get their little noses in there. You'll see them open those little shells and go in there. Got some pictures of that. But anyhow, I'll try again.
Okay.
Also, so it's important to keep as much natural as possible because this is not, you know, in many places, this lot would be unbuildable, except when we made this ordinance, those of us who spoke for and against it and so forth, one of the things is, they said, well, the city didn't want to make a lot unbuildable for an owner. And we've already seen some of your variances have been based on that, I think. Places that were clearly in the floodplain have been allowed to be built on. So anyhow, I see it as a possibility, if they do the things that have been discussed and promised and that they utilize the expert advice, that maybe, you know, well, some of the other things are the swales, the retention areas, parallel in the stream. These things should use the native soil, not be dug out and filled in with something else, but just let it soak in there. Because these are recharge areas. These kind of places are where the groundwater is recharged from surface water. And upstream from there, there is, you know, it's several blocks just below and behind the revenue office, there's a core of engineers protected site that was put in there. That's the same stream that went all the way down there. Mr. Hoskins is familiar with that, part of that land.
What land?
From the revenue office and anyway, so that's a stream that comes from way up there and gathers water from all sides. And it's very important that it do its part to help keep Beaver Lake watershed clean and provide for some of the wild things and provide for the health of our citizens. And so if you approve it, I think the strictest requirements of supervision and utilization of the lowest impact techniques possible would make it a benefit to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I would like to thank the staff and the applicant also for getting this project where they could actually recommend approval to you. We had many meetings with it. The staff was very clear that all of the parking had to be removed from the streamside zone. It put a real crimp, obviously, in this development to try to get enough parking places to do that, but they did accomplish that, assuming you all approved the variances to allow the parking along the street and the other things. Actually, I think that this project now is going to be a good project, if you're allowed to go forward. The tree lawn through the middle of the parking lot, I think, will be very beneficial to provide shade, just a whole line of trees that will be providing shade throughout that entire parking lot, especially in the afternoon. And hopefully there'll be trees also on the outside of the parking lot to the west of Parkland that will provide further shade. And so I just think that Sarah's work and Andrew and Jeremy worked very hard on this as well as our urban forester, Megan Dale, looked at this very carefully and to protect the entrance of the citizens, but also to try to make it where this project could succeed. I do agree with Aubrey. I would love to see some of the native plants saved and maybe moved into, closer to the creek where the land will not be disturbed and where they would be able to grow in the future. And I do applaud the applicant for hiring the experts who helped us with streamside issues early on and have worked for the city to repair stream sides in the past and very successfully. So I just think staff really went out of their way to work very hard on this and to make it where we are business friendly and worked very hard to make sure that this could be something they could recommend to you. So I wanted to thank staff for that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to hang on that very sentiment and just say that our streamside protection ordinance really makes projects look and function very differently than they otherwise would. And even when we have many variances granted to a project, the effect of the streamside protection ordinance is huge in making these projects so much better and really forces the developers and the city staff to get together and work out problems and come up with solutions and be creative. And, you know, it's hard to do, but I think it's just fantastic, you know, what you guys can work out together. And so I really applaud what you're doing. So I have just one question about if it's reasonable to add a, let's find exactly where it was in here. Staff has several bullet points that speak to how the project should be done and as far as the bio-retention areas and the repairing enhancements and that sort of thing. Would it be appropriate to add to that, that planning commission requests that the developers salvage, store, and replant some of the existing native plants with their roots?
I think that could be subsection H of condition of approval number one, which talks about the streamside protection zones. I don't think that would be that difficult to say some, obviously you can't say all of the plants, but I think that, I don't know.
Let me ask, could Ms. Formica, do you mind coming up and kind of giving us?
This is my first time coming up here. So anyway.
You're speaking to the microphone.
We usually, we usually look at a site and look for the native plants that are there and then we try to salvage them. In this case, our part is like along the stream. So what we can do is work with Crafton Toll and look at the entire site and go ahead and flag areas where they're going to be developing and go ahead and make plans to use those.
Great.
If that's what you guys would like to see. I mean, that would be fantastic. And the fact that Aubrey's gone out there, because the plants, they're not always blooming or they're dormant at times. So the fact that Aubrey's gone out there and identified some plants, right now, we can go ahead and go back out there and GPS those areas.
Cool.
In case when we're building, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be able to see them.
Yeah, right.
And then his idea about using the soils in the bio-retention areas is a fantastic idea. So that's something, again, we can, we do that on our own sites when we do stream restoration, but this is a great opportunity to work with the developers and take that soil that, I don't know what would happen to it, but, you know, make sure it goes into the bio-retention areas.
Excellent.
Okay.
I'll add that too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay, go ahead.
You don't?
Sure.
Okay, yes, sir.
Did you want to comment on that?
No, I was just going to add that in the letter that Sandy had kind of summarized the project plans for that. You know, we do go into some detail about, you know, that area being city of the property and that any of those improvements will be reviewed and approved by, you know, staff there. And so those things will be reviewed at that time too. So we'll have another opportunity to make sure of those things then.
Excellent. Good, thank you. Tracy?
Sure. Glenn, a couple of questions. By our code, isn't there a ratio, actually, I've got a few questions for you. Is there a ratio of 17-foot parking spaces that are not? I mean, you can have all of them in a parking lot 17 feet or you can have so many percentage of them 17 feet?
I'm going to defer to that. Planning staff has the planning ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
The code allows for parking spaces to be 17-foot as long as they have two-foot overhang over green space. So that's allowed by right to go to 17-foot stalls.
Okay. And then while we're at it, what is the minimum drive aisle width in a parking lot with 90-degree parking?
24-foot wide.
And so we've got one on here that's 23 feet, then we've got one across that's 27 feet. Would it be a stupid question to ask why that row of parking wasn't shifted to make both of those drive aisles conform?
Fire.
Certainly not a stupid question, no, certainly a good question. Once the building gets over a certain height, they have to have enough width of a drive aisle to have a ladder truck next to it. And then the minimum width is 26-foot wide. And I don't remember exactly why this dimension is 27 instead of 26, but.
It's a back of curve to back of curve measurement, so it's 26 feet clear width from face of curve to face of curve. And 22, instead of the 23 that you're seeing, that's a back-to-back, so it'll be 22 feet.
No, no, you just confused me. You said back-to-back.
Back-to-back.
Of curves, there's no curves.
Well, but the way we measure those, we typically.
Talking about stall to stall, are you talking about?
Stall to stall, which is typically measured from face of curve to face of curve, would be 22 feet. So the 24 that he mentioned, all of our standard ones are shown to be 25 feet back-to-back, which when you take a six-inch curb off of each side of the aisle.
So this is really a two-foot variance that they have requested?
Correct.
Okay.
And they are correct, that 26 feet clear is required by the fire department adjacent to those buildings.
And the, all these parking spaces on the west side of this project, none of them are labeled as far as the depth. Should I assume that all these parking spaces are 17 feet deep?
Yes.
Okay. Wow. Okay, then, so we're also asking for a variance of the width of the tree lawn from eight feet to six feet. Then we've got 17-foot parking spaces facing those sides of that tree lawn. So you lose two feet of overhang on each side, so you actually have two feet down the center for trees. Is that right?
Yeah, and that did come up in our meeting when we had the group meeting with Megan about the concern of, you know, cars hitting trees and things like that because that is narrower than what you would typically see. I think we can arrange these in a fashion to where they're between parking stalls, you know, stall lines, so that a car, you know, wouldn't be licensed, you know, their license plate wouldn't be headed right into it. And I think we can space those out. On average, these are shown on this landscape plan at 20 feet on center. You know, two parking stalls in a row, nine-foot parking stalls is 18 feet, you know. So as long as we're in that 18-foot on-center planning, I think we could make it work.
That definitely makes me feel better about it. You're talking about putting trees at the corners of the parking stall stripes.
Correct.
And putting it at 18 feet on center instead of 20 feet on center.
Correct.
So that they all fall on those stripes and so the cars are actually parked between the trees as opposed to bumping into them.
Correct.
That just leads me to one other question. People get out of their cars and they're trying to get from this west parking stall to that building, so where do they cross? They're not going to cross where their cars are and now they can't cross where the trees are. So how do they get to the building? People get out of their cars and they're trying to get from this west parking stall to that building, so where do they cross? They're not gonna cross where their cars are and now they can't cross where the trees are, so how do they get to the building?
Well, I think that would be something, you know, the users of this property are gonna be primarily students that aren't gonna be, you know, they're not gonna be using their cars on a daily basis, you know? So they may, but it's not gonna be like a commercial center where you'd have a lot of pedestrian traffic in and out. A lot of them are gonna be using transit and things like that. So the parking that's here is, I think we view it as more long-term, you know, type parking. And so that really wasn't a concern for us. I think the users will get used to it after this.
They'll make their own path kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the, from a planning point of view, the, parking looks like a potential disaster for me. I know I probably wouldn't park there, but this is the opinion.
That's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay, sure.
So we're gonna move to approve administrative item thirteen dash four three-three-zero for southwest corner of Fifteenth Street and Razorback Road, that's what we're calling it. And adding to the conditions of approval, number one, we'll call it H, that the developer will salvage, store and replant some existing native plants with their roots. And I that some of the existing soils will be used in the bio retention areas. I think that's vague enough.
And with all other variances?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. All other conditions of approval, of which there are eight.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
One more quick question. On this plan, your tree lawn, are these raised curbs or are they, or is it in the-
We haven't decided that yet, but I think there's an opportunity to be able to create some sort of water quality feature and treatment, you know, sort of a depressed island instead. But we haven't analyzed that that far. I certainly think that if we do try and do something like that, there'll be, need to be some more further vehicle protection, you know, either bumper stops or-
Won't that change your dimensioning? I mean, if you haven't planned this for curbs and you go and you add curbs, isn't that gonna change your dimensions across this parking lot?
Yes, it's planned, it's drawn with curbs.
Okay, that, I guess that's-
So it's kind of a worst-case scenario. So if we did remove the curbs, we would gain a little bit of space.
Then you'd have to have the bumpers to keep them from running into trees.
Correct. Or we may do a combination where we've just got curb cuts in that curb, you know, every so often to allow that stormwater into those areas.
Yeah, that was actually, that was actually my question, if it's drawn with curbs. If it's not drawn with curbs, isn't that gonna change your dimensioning? And so what we're looking at is not what's gonna be built. Or B, if it is drawn with curbs, have you considered something along that lines as far as curbless with the bumps or what have you to gain more space for the trees in the lawn? That's kind of where I was going with that, but, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion?
All right, I got a motion, a second. Mr. Gar.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Pennington?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. All right, last item, under new, new business, I guess.
You got new business?
No, it's new, new business.
New, new business. ADM thirteen dash four-four-oh-eight submitted by city planning staff, the bicycle parking code adjustments. Mr. S. requests to amend chapter one-seventy-two to revise the bicycle rack location requirements and review.
Denied.
I guess you're the only staff member left, so it's all yours.
You're on your own.
This is a pretty minor change, I think, to the bike rack parking requirements. We're just requesting that the code be changed to allow for six-foot separation from bicycle rack to a fire hydrant. Right now, the code says fifteen feet. And the fire code actually requires three-foot clear around fire hydrants, so we're still building in some extra clearance to still meet fire code. And Marshall has reviewed it and they are okay with it. And so we recommend this be forwarded to city council if the commission is comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Forwarded with recommendation approval.
Correct.
Anybody in the audience want to comment on the bicycle racks?
Nope. Make it quick.
We need good bicycle racks all over town.
I agree. Should we take the old one and get replanted in new areas?
I would not dig up a bike rack to replace it. I would just add more.
Do you ride a bike, Aubrey?
Because those old perennials will stand a long time.
Do you ride a bike?
Leave them in the ground.
You don't even ride a bike, do you? You don't even own a bike, do you?
Yeah, yeah, actually, in Little Rock, there was a time when I had an accident in a pickup truck.
It was rhetorical.
And I had to ride a bike through downtown streets to get from a couple of miles away. And it was terrifying. There were no bike racks, people would steal the bikes if you went up on the street. And it was dangerous and we had no trailers for them. So it's a new world.
It is, thank you.
All right, bring it back to the commission, some comments or motions or otherwise.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we forward ADM thirteen dash four-four-oh-eight to city council with the recommendation for approval, of approval.
Second.
All right, motion second. Any other discussion? Mr. Gar.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Sure, yes.
Pennington?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Motion carries.